Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission’s March 3rd, 2016 meeting. We do have a quorum, and for all in attendance, please note that today’s meeting is being live streamed on the NCPC website. With our quorum, we will proceed with the agenda that has been publicly noticed. I will note that we have a relatively short agenda today, but a number of very interesting items, and so we’ll try to move through expeditiously. Agenda item number one is a report of the chairman, and I would like to welcome Tom Gallus, who was the newest presidential appointee representing the state of Maryland. Tom is CEO of Torrey Gallus and Partners. He’s been at the firm for about 30 years, and he’s had a number of positions at the firm. Many of us know Torrey Gallus and the very good work that they do, so welcome, Tom, very much. We’re very happy to have you here. Also want to note that Congressman Chaffetz, Chair of the House Committee on Oversight and Government Reform, has advised me of the alternate delegates to the commission. Katie Bailey is the staff director of the Subcommittee on Government Operations. Jeffrey Post is the deputy director of that Subcommittee, and Christopher D'Angelo is the professional staff member, and Christopher is here today. Welcome. Likewise, Senator Johnson, Chair of the Committee on Homeland Security and Government Affairs, has advised that Rebecca Newsy, a professional staff member, will be the second alternate with Patrick Bailey, who is the chief counsel for the government affairs, continuing as first alternate. Rebecca, welcome. We’re very happy that you’re here. A commission notified the commissioners the other day, but we’re very pleased that Julia Costa, who is the Director of the Office of Public Engagement, and everyone knows Julia, she is assuming the role of commission secretariat in addition to continuing to head up OPE. This comes on the heels of Deborah Young, who has valuably served as our commission secretary for many, many years. Deborah has taken on additional duties as the Director of the Office of Administration, and so as she transitions to that important role, Julia will take over as Secretary to the commission. So we very much welcome Julia to her new role. The last item I’ll note is that we have a visitor today, Daniel Atherton, who is a student at the University of London but is taking leave and is spending a year at George Washington University, and is currently interning with Virginia Senator Mark Warner is here today, and Daniel is observing our proceedings. Any questions on anything I’ve noted? Hearing none. Agenda item number two is reported to the executive director, Mr. Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and welcome to our new commissioners, and we’re glad to have you at NCPC, and feel free to reach out to the staff if you happen to have any questions or comments about the commission. And many thanks to Deborah Young for her many years of service to the commission as our secretary. She’s served not only the commission ably, but also the staff, and to me as a personal and professional advisor, so I’d like to thank her for her good work, and we’re also happy that she’s still here as our director of administration. And also Julia Costa, who’s taken on the secretariat’s position. It’s well deserved, and I think you’ll see a lot of great changes as we move the commission towards more electronic and website-based information to better serve you, and I think we have a lot of great ideas that you’ll see happen over the next couple of months and years. So thank you very much to Julia for taking this on. Today I was notified that our agency was awarded an outstanding honor award from the American Planning Association’s Federal Planning Division for our recently adopted urban design element of the comprehensive plan. I’d like to congratulate our project team, Mike Sherman, Lucy Kemp, Dareth Bush, Angela DuPont, Jason Buskey, Julia Costa, and Paul Jutton for their fine work. This was just adopted by the commission just a few months ago, but it was all done in-house, which is kind of rare for a comprehensive plan. And also many thanks to the commission and to all of you for your input and contributions to this work. So it is a great honor, and we thank all of the staff and everyone who’s participated in this. So that’s the end of my report, and I’m happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Costa? Agenda item number three is the legislative update, and General Counsel, Ms. Schuyler.
Again, welcome to all of our new commissioners. You will hear from me time to time about legislation pending on the Hill that impacts the agency’s functions. Today I’d like to report that on February 24th, the House passed an amended version of HR 1475, which is also known as the Korean War Veterans Memorial Wall of Remembrance Act of 2016. This act calls for the addition of a war of remembrance at the Korean War Memorial, and this wall will list the following information: the names of U.S. forces killed in theater in the Korean War, the number of members of the U.S. forces who were wounded in action, listed as missing in action or were prisoners of wars, and the number of members of the Korean Army and other members of the UN forces serving as augmentation forces to the U.S. forces who were killed, wounded in action, listed as missing in action, or were prisoners of war. The bill has now been received in the Senate and is awaiting Senate action. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Schuyler? Agenda item number four is the consent calendar. We have three items. Item 4A is the surface parking lots at the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency at Fort Belvoir. Item 4B is Founder’s Hall for the National Museum of the United States Army located at Fort Belvoir in Fairfax. And item 4C is a new training center at Fort Belvoir. All three items are at Fort Belvoir. Are there any questions on any item on the consent calendar? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the consent calendar?
Yes.
It’s been moved and seconded. All in favor of this consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Agenda item number 5A is the preliminary and final site and building plans for the Pentagon Support Operations Center. We have Mr. Hart. Welcome.
Have the mic on. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. The Washington Headquarters Services submitted the Pentagon Support Operations Center for preliminary and final review. This project is located on the Pentagon Reservation, which is in Arlington County, Virginia. Here we have the Pentagon Reservation itself. It is the home of the Department of Defense, as you all know, to orient you. We have, the Pentagon Building is here, the Route 27 is the westerly boundary of the reservation, and Route 110 actually cuts through the reservation and cuts off a portion of the reservation known as the North Area. And this North Area is next to, or just to the west of, the Pentagon Lagoon, which, of course, empties into the Potomac River. As many of you may recall, WHS submitted the Pentagon Reservation Master Plan for final review at the commission’s May meeting last year. The commission approved the master plan but did not approve the North Area or the proposed parking ratio of one space per 3.2 employees for the installation. The North Area consists of the North Village, as you can see here, and the North Parking Lot. The Pentagon Support Operations Center, also known as PSOC Building, it will be located in the North Village. The comprehensive plan parking ratio for the installation is one space per four employees. The commission focused its recommendations on the North Area because there is this large parking lot here, that is in close proximity to the Pentagon Lagoon, and it recognized an opportunity to link parking space removal with minimizing impacts on the floodplain, which is an environmentally sensitive area. So the commissioner, at our last meeting, Commissioner Rhodes updated the commission on the Pentagon Reservation Master Plan regarding stormwater regulations. He noted that the WHS developed a Chesapeake Bay Total Maximum Daily Load, or TMDL, action plan for the reservation. In addition, staff learned that WHS received its municipal separate storm sewer system permit, which is also known as an MS4 permit approval, from the Virginia Department of the Environmental Quality. He also noted that since May, WHS conducted a more thorough population count after realizing that the 23,000 population number had been used since the 1990s, and it really needed to be revised. This new population number is now 26,500, which is an increase of over 3,500 employees. This will raise the parking ratio to one space per 3.7 employees, or 1 to 3.7, once WHS reduces the parking inventory by approximately 1,300 spaces. We appreciate the effort that WHS is putting forward to move towards the comprehensive plan ratio of one parking space per four employees through parking reduction and population increases. He also noted that WHS would be submitting an update to the master plan for NCPC approval. So we get to our project. The site for the PSOC Building is shown here. It was included in the 2015 master plan. WHS described in the master plan that it explored other locations on the Pentagon Reservation but found this as the most appropriate location for the site. Staff is satisfied that the location is appropriate after reviewing the information that they provided. WHS states that the PSOC Building will be a one-story, 33,800-square-foot support facility, providing updated and permanent space for three functions of the Pentagon Forest Protection Agency, and these functions are a firing range, an armory, a court liaison evidence branch, and finally, a K-9 officer area with kennels. This is the area, the North Village, in this image, and it was most recently used as temporary contractor operations associated with the Pentagon renovation project. It is completely enclosed, as you see the fence enclosing this area, and the main entrance, vehicular entrance, is on the southern portion of the site. There are existing 165 parking spaces at this location. So I’ll also point out that there’s a grade change between the roads on either side of the North Village, and that grade change is about a little over 20 feet. And you’ll see here, Route 27, which is to the west of it, Route 27 is here. In the images, it’s here, this bridge, and this bridge here. Here’s the 500-year floodplain on the North Area. I’ve outlined it in purple for you to be able to see a little easier. As you can see, much of the North Area is within that 500-year floodplain. I’ll note two executive orders, Executive Order 11988, which was back in 1977. It was an executive order that describes what federal agencies need to do regarding building on floodplains. First, it recommends avoiding placing the buildings on the 100-year floodplain, but if it is unavoidable, then determine how to minimize harm to persons and property. It was recently amended in 2015 with Executive Order 13690, which encourages federal agencies to design with floods higher than the 100-year floodplain, excuse me, flood in mind, and not to place critical facilities on the floodplain. So the reason the project is before you today is because it is located in an area of the Pentagon Reservation, which the commission had not approved. WHS provided you with an update on the Pentagon Master Plan at our last meeting, as I noted earlier, and described how it will continue its efforts to reach the comprehensive plan 1 to 4 parking ratio. Overall, staff is supportive of the building because it has included changes that reduce its impact in the area. We focus on three main issues. You see them here: the relocation of the facility that reduces its impact on the 500-year floodplain, the increase in permeable services with the creation of a green roof, and removal of the parking lot and several buildings, and finally, parking space reduction that will help it to approach the 1 to 4 parking ratio. I’ve combined the proposal and analysis in the next few slides. So the site plan is fairly basic. The building itself is shown here in the center of the slide. There is a kennel to the north of the building, a little area for government vehicle parking, this is for kind of patrol cars, and then there’s a main entrance which is located here. This image is a little easier to see. This perspective rendering shows the relationship between the building itself, which is here, next to Route 27, which is shown here in the background. It will be generally a precast concrete building that will have more of an industrial look and incorporate a glass curtain wall at the entrance, as well as a kind of a metal panel that will cover the entrance as a metal canopy. A vegetative roof is also incorporated. This building actually sits back within the hillside that goes up to Route 27. I described the hill in an earlier slide. The kennel, which is to the northern portion of the site, is a standalone building. It has a standing seam metal roof and wood siding. There is a covered walkway that connects it to the rest of the building. So this is a perspective rendering from the ground view looking towards the west and the main entrance. The floor plan identifies the three functions of the PSOC Building: the firing range and armory and admin space, the K-9 officers and K-9 space, and then court liaison and evidence facility to the eastern portion of the building. So the first issue that I raised was about the relocation of the facility. This is the location of the facility from the 2015 master plan. The master plan included this facility, and it was, as you can see, on the 500-year floodplain. This is the portion of it that was on the, excuse me, that was included, that was on the 500-year floodplain. And this is the location of the building now that WHS has submitted to us. You’ll note that the building has been moved kind of closer to 27, as well as moved north and flipped. The portion of the building that is in the 500-year floodplain with this new location is shown here in the red areas, and so I’ll kind of toggle between the two to show what these look like. So as you can tell, there is a reduction in the amount of building that’s actually located on the 500-year floodplain. Staff is supportive of the proposal because it meets the current federal regulations regarding floodplanes, development of the floodplanes, and 13690, which encourages federal agencies to design with floods higher than the 100-year floodplain in mind and not to place critical facilities in the floodplain. WHS notes that the PSOC Building is not a critical facility but a support facility and is only partially located in the floodplain, and that actually has been moved further off of the floodplain. The next issue is about decreasing the impervious surface area. WHS notes that they will add approximately 21,290 square feet, or approximately half an acre of permeable surface area, to the North Village with the project. It’s important because the floodplain is an area where floodwater absorbs into the ground. We support increasing the permeable surface area in the sensitive 500-year floodplain. And the last issue is parking space reduction. The amount of, the image on the right shows the parking lot, as well as the buildings that will be removed as part of this project, so the buildings and parking area are here. You’ll note that there’s other parking that’s on the site. In this image, you’ll see that there are, the 59 parking spaces that will be removed will leave a total of 106 spaces in this North Village, and you’ll see in the, you can see in the image where these parking spaces will be located. We are supportive of this as it will help to reduce the overall parking supply and help to move the Pentagon closer to meeting the 1 to 4 parking ratio goal. And with that, it is the executive director’s recommendation that the commission support the Pentagon Support Operations Center project. As WHS made the following design changes: shifts the facility out of the 500-year floodplain, removes 59 existing parking spaces, incorporates a green roof, and increases the permeable area at the site, encourages WHS to continue its progress towards attaining the 1 parking space to 4 employee parking ratio, notes that although WHS submitted its project for preliminary review, staff is recommending a combined preliminary and final approval as the project is sufficiently developed, and therefore approves the preliminary and final site and building plans for the PSOC Building, which is located at the Pentagon Reservation in Arlington County. And that concludes my presentation. I’m available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. And I believe is the case, this project is especially before us because it’s on a project site that’s on part of the master plan that we have not previously approved. Is that correct?
That is correct. And I’ll also note that there is a corrected EDR in front of you. There’s a minor correction, and just wanted you to note that.
Indeed.
But yes, you are correct. That’s the reason it is before you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Questions or comments on the project? Mike, you have anything?
We’ve been working this with the staff for a while, you know, through the development of the master plan. We’ve got some smart folks over here that can certainly answer any specific questions if there are those, but we’re happy to respond to anything. We think we’re ready to go forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Wright?
Just a quick question. So was the recalculation of the population, I don’t know if I’m asking you or I’m asking you. I guess I’m asking you. Was the recalculation the result of mobile work strategies, or are there just more people there? So are you shifting from head count to seat count, or are you doing a little bit of both, or what?
Actually, the 23,000 was a number we used from prior to the renovation through the renovation, well, actually, from the beginning of the renovation through the renovation when we had about a tenth of the building out, and so, and we just carried forward with that number for the longest time. So it’s just actually finally counting for the first time in about 20 years. We also, to implement Homeland Security Presidential Directive 12, we’ve gone to an entirely new access control system. In the process of doing that, we got an update, a very specific and confident updated count of those that are actually, I don’t have my badge, I’m not supposed to, but, that are actually swiping in and regularly going in. So we have that as a basis of count. And then the, I think the one other variable we really didn’t count were the contractors that are there supporting the building, not working as staff or in with staff, but in the concessionary and other operations, but those are folks that are coming to the building on a regular basis. So we actually got a real accurate count post-renovation time. Yep. Now, our intent, though, if I might, our intent going forward is, we are in the process, as you well know, of the 20% reduction in the lease space over the next five years in the National Capital Region. But subsequent to that, that was part of some moves and other things we had planned, but subsequent to that, we’re now doing an actual seat inventory of every single seat in lease space and every single seat in the Pentagon with the intent of reducing further and maximizing our use of the facility. But I don’t know the net effect of that in the end. That’s why I was a little wary of going further beyond the current counts until I can get a sense of how many more I can get there in the building before we get to a final insight, but we’ll be doing that over the next couple of years.
Additional questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the EDR?
No.
It’s been moved, and Mr. Gallus seconds?
I’ll second.
Your first official action?
Don’t move.
It’s been properly moved and seconded. Sensing no further discussion, all in favor of the EDR as presented, say aye. Opposed, no. Thank you very much.
One abstention. Mr. Chairman? Abstention.
One abstention. Agenda item number 6A is an information presentation on the three future alternative sites for the consolidated FBI headquarters.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. You may recall the commission’s recent action to amend the Pennsylvania Avenue Plan this past December as part of the FBI headquarters consolidation effort, which is being managed by the U.S. General Services Administration. This presentation today is intended to provide the commission with an overview of the other side of the project, or the three potential future consolidation sites outside of the District of Columbia. Our presenter here today is Mr. Bill Dowd, who serves as GSA’s project executive overseeing the FBI consolidation project, and this effort includes an ongoing environmental review of the project under the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, as well as the project’s ongoing RFP process. All three potential future sites, as well as the future development of the existing J. Edgar Hoover Building Site, are being analyzed through this ongoing environmental impact statement. Previously, NCPC staff has sent a comment letter to GSA as part of the EIS process, and this letter was included in your review packets, and we have also placed a hard copy of the letter at each of your places as well. For your reference, NCPC would have an advisory review role over the future campus plan at each of the three locations, and should the Green Belt site be selected, our commission may also have an approval role under the Capper-Crampton Act should the project require any modifications to the general development plan for an adjacent park, which was acquired through congressional funding under this act in 1930. And Mr. Dowd will show you this park in a later slide during his presentation. So that concludes my remarks, and I’ll now turn the floor over to Mr. Dowd.
Thank you. Welcome back, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, and...
For those assembled, Mr. Dowd was a longtime key staff member here before he fled to GSA and left us. Welcome back.
Well, you know, I was going to resist. I’d seen enough former NCPC members come up and talk about their glory days, but I was going to refrain from that. But since you mentioned it, I did go to GSA in a hope to try to advance some of the fine planning initiatives that came out of the Planning Commission. And so a big part of the FBI headquarters is, as you know, I think, one of the most exciting aspects that relate to the Planning Commission is moving FBI out of the building next door, right? That’s the big prize. But what I’m going to talk to you about today is kind of the more boring stuff about where they might go somewhere else and how it relates to NCPC’s roles. But it is my distinct pleasure to be here today, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I guess I’ve got controls here, right? So I will give, as I said, a brief presentation overview, and then be happy to answer any and all questions that you have that I’m able to. As you know, we aren’t in a procurement, so I may use that as a excuse on some of your more difficult questions. But what is it we are proposing? And these are the questions that are answered in the environmental impact statement process. So it’s basically two things. It’s the acquisition of a consolidated FBI headquarters at a new permanent location and the exchange of the J. Edgar Hoover Building. The NEPA process does not get into the future potential development on the Hoover Building. It is the action of transferring title, and so that action would be subject to future scrutiny. One of the things that I guess I should cover here, in addition to what is GSA proposing, it’s also why. Why are we proposing this? So I’ll give you a high-level summary there. The Federal Bureau of Investigation is located, as we know, the headquarters next door, but that’s only about half of their population, their headquarters operation. There’s about 5,200 employees there, and their consolidated headquarters will be comprised of about 11,000 employees. And the rest of those folks are around the city, around the region, in 13 different leases. So they currently occupy about 3 million square feet of space, and we are looking to consolidate their operations to about 2.1 million rentable square feet. You’ll also hear different numbers about how many square feet, but the 2.1 rentable is the number that we’re using. You’ll hear some numbers that are larger that might be the gross square footage, but I’ll walk you through that on the slide and what that 2.1 million square feet is. The FBI also needs collaborative space to do their work better and more efficient operations, right? They are securing all 14 of those work sites. They have cost for lobbies, and as I said, they have individual security operations. So we believe that this consolidation, while there is a price tag to it, it will ultimately save the government money, and that is one of the premises that we are going into this So this is the facility. So it’s not just a single building. We are looking for a building that has, a facility that will have a main building or multiple buildings. This is yet to be determined. We have not developed a design concept for any of these sites, and I’ll walk you through that when we talk about the three sites. But each of the sites obviously will include that office building, parking structures, a visitor center, a truck inspection and remote delivery facility, a central utility plant, a substation, and standby generators. So here you can see the gross square footage of the facility. So this is kind of a big operation that we’re looking at. So this is kind of a big operation that we're looking at, which is one of the reasons you see that the sites that we were able to find that could accommodate that. Actually, the first component is the security zone, right? This is one of the many reasons why Hoover doesn't meet their purposes. It's impossible to provide security in this urban setting. So we looked around the region at sites that could accommodate the new facility, and as I'm probably jumping around, so let me stick up to my sequence, and we'll talk about the three sites when we get there. This slide is, as it says, the notional project timeline, and this will give you some information about the procurement process that we're in, right? We start here at January 22nd, we released the Phase II RFP. That's our Phase II Request for Proposals. We had previously gone through the first phases, which identified a shortlist of qualified offers. We had asked the development community to let us know, express their interest and their qualifications for constructing a new 2.1 million square foot facility, and their interest in being part of the deal whereby they would receive title to the Hoover Building as part of their compensation. So we had identified a shortlist of offers, and on January 22nd issued them the Phase II RFP, which is the blueprint for how we would like them to submit their proposal. We are providing them five months to develop that proposal, and those responses, as you see, are due June 22nd. We expect there will be a period of about four months where we will evaluate those proposals, enter into discussions, and ask those offers to refine their proposals prior to identifying the preferred alternative. And here's where we fold into the NEPA process. So out of that procurement process, we will be in a position to identify our preferred alternative, right? As you may know, the procurement process is one by which we will identify the offer, the best offer to the government, and the best site. So the procurement process essentially says, provide us your best proposal on the site that works best, and we will look at your price and your technical components and choose the proposal that is the best value to the government. Through that process, we will be able to identify that preferred alternative and incorporate that into the final EIS in November. After 30 days, we would be able to issue a record of decision, and based on that schedule, we would then be able to enter into a award or contract to that preferred offer. The second-to-last step is submit master plan to NCPC. So at this point, we are not looking for design, we are going through the process to identify that preferred offer and the preferred site. We will then go in through the process of site design and development, and one of those first steps will be to submit that master plan to NCPC for review and comment. And ultimately, we will occupy a new facility. We don't have a projected date on that yet. Each of the three sites that we're considering have different timelines, and in the proposals, we are asking the offers to give us their timeline for when they would deliver a new facility for the FBI on one of those sites. That's the general process and where we are. As Mike had pointed out, there are several NCPC review authorities. We have worked very well with the staff to this point, and I'm glad to be here today, and I know that we will be back here several times, as I just talked about, the master plan review as part of the Planning Act review. Capper-Crampton on the one site, the Green Belt site, I'll show that in a subsequent slide. And as Mike touched on a little bit here, is the development of the plan amendment and the proposed square guidelines. And you all took an action in December to recommend plan amendment language, so amendment to the Pennsylvania Avenue Plan, which was transmitted to GSA and incurred upon by the National Park Service. On January 13th, we transmitted that to the Hill. The statute requires that we submit it to the Hill and wait at least 60 days before amending the plan. That language is very helpful and provides guidance to the offers about what can be done here. But the real work, I think, ahead of our agencies collectively is development of square guidelines. That's the more detailed work that allows the offers to value the site. That's incredibly important to GSA, so that these offers come in with their best value. And their best value is dependent upon clear information about what can be developed. And I know in early discussions with the staff, I know they are eager to work and to work as quickly as possible, and so I wanted to express my appreciation for that, the work that has been done to this point and in advance of the work that we have been So these are the sites. The graphics that you'll see here are the draft EIS alternatives, and so we have three sites. The first one is Landover. This is about 80 acres. It's a privately owned site. It is privately owned, but the GSA has a lease purchase, or a purchase option agreement for the property. So we control this through September 30th of 2017, that that site will be, we have a purchase price, so we can acquire it. As I said, it's 80 acres. The developable areas and the parking and the configuration that you'll see in these slides are the configuration that we use to do the draft EIS analysis. As I said before, we will look to our exchange partner to come up with a specific proposal when we do design, and we will coordinate that with NCPC. But this gives a sense between the different sites of the developable land and the building heights. And it also includes parking, and no presentation of the Planning Commission would be appropriate without talking about parking. So we've got a slide that will summarize that, because I think that's, there's some information out there, and I'd like to clarify that and provide an opportunity to answer for it. Pointing the wrong way, right? So this is the Green Belt site. This is a smaller site, but it is located immediately adjacent to the Green Belt Metro Station and just inside the Beltway. This site, GSA also has a purchase option agreement with, between Lamada. I'm going to jump straight to the next page, because this also includes the park. As you'll see, the development area is confined to what is presently the surface parking lot. But to provide the security buffer for the site, there is a permanent easement for the park, and that park was purchased through the Capper-Crampton Act, which gives the Commission approval over that development plan or any changes to that development plan. At this point, we don't anticipate that there will be any changes to that, but we are well aware of that, and we'll work with the Commission for any impacts here. You'll also see here, we have identified the number of parking, the employee parking spaces that we think are needed to support this, and I'll summarize that after we get through each of the slides here in the parking discussion. The Springfield site, this is again the alternative in the draft EIS. This site is owned by the federal government. The GSA has warehouse and other tenants on that site. For this site to become selected, the tenants, the current tenants would be relocated. And we have informed the offers the cost for that, which will be factored in. And this is a 58-acre site, is also proximate to a metro station, the Springfield Metro Station. As you can see. The parking issue. So when we issued the draft EIS, and that was published on November 6th, when it went out for public comment, we included in that for each of the sites, essentially used the NCPC guidelines in identifying employee parking levels. And as you all are well aware, that for sites outside of the district that are essentially within walking distance of a metro station, the guidance suggests one parking space per three employees. And so those were the ratios that the draft EIS had for both Springfield and for Green Belt. And Landover, which is about two miles from the metro station, we used the NCPC guidelines of one space per 1.5 employees. What we realized is, just about that time in the fall, that we looked more closely at what we thought the parking demand would be, the requirements for employees to get to each of these sites, and recognizing, even in NCPC's transportation element of the comprehensive plan, the discussion about looking at end-of-line stations more closely, that they need special consideration. So we looked around at what guidance is there? How do we identify a reasonable amount of parking so that we can do two things? One, ensure that our final EIS includes an evaluation of what those impacts would be; and two, that in our RFP process, since, again, as we are looking for offers to provide us the best proposal on the best site, we felt the need to ensure that that process included our most accurate estimate of what that parking would be on-site and what those impacts would be. Because in addition to building us the site, we are expecting the offers to also mitigate the off-site impacts. And so what we did is, we looked around at other similar agencies, or similar work sites that were near the end of the line or at the end of the line on metro, and around the Beltway, and evaluated what their parking requirement is, how do people operate? And so we came up with numbers here that are on the bottom of the screen, and that were reflected on those previous sites. So we're showing employee parking for 11,000 employees, employee parking at Landover of 7,300, employee parking at Springfield of about 6,400 spaces, and employee parking at Green Belt of about 6,000 spaces. And so that is the information that we put into the RFP, and that is the information that we intend to evaluate in the final EIS. But as I said before, once we identify a single site, we will be here before the Commission to present the master plan and the transportation management plan, and at that time, with more specific information, we'd be happy to revisit what those are, so that we minimize our vehicle trips in the region, and also ensure that we're providing a facility that allows the FBI to operate.
So a quick question. So at Green Belt and Springfield, in real numbers, what's the differential between the preferred ratio and what your...
Right. So, well, the three to one, so it's in the draft EIS, so where we started was one to three, so that was 3,600. We recognized that that was woefully short of supporting the need at the site. And again, like I said, so we went through this exercise of seeing what was out there, and how other agencies actually function. And so that's the numbers. We use ratios here, but I think that it's sort of probably easier for me to understand is those numbers. So one to one and a half is 7,300 spaces for 11,000 employees. And at these other two sites, we really didn't get the ratio and then identify the numbers. We looked at what we thought the number was, and that was about 6,400 spaces at Springfield, and about 61, I think it was 6,076, if I remember the exact number, for Green Belt.
But I guess my question, maybe I missed it, how many spaces in excess are you? How much, how many spaces are you over what the preferred is?
In excess? Well, over the guidance?
Over the guidance, yeah.
That would be, it was 3,600 plus or minus.
From 3,600 to 6,000, right? And so 3,600 to 6,400 as well, okay. I see.
Correct.
It's a fair amount.
Yeah, and you know, we struggled, as I said, in the draft EIS, we used the NCPC guidance of one to three. But, and we looked to verify that out of what's operating, how do other agencies operate? And we were not able to do that. Instead, what we found was these other numbers, right? But what happens at the Naval Hospital at NIH? And we looked at not just what is provided for employee parking on-site, but what we did look at is how are people operating? So, you know, we found that people are driving, and they're finding a way to park legally, illegally, in the neighborhoods. We also got comments in the draft EIS that expressed concern with what they saw as low numbers, and they're worried that it would generate off-site impacts to the neighborhoods of parking in the neighborhoods. So we're really trying to do the most responsible thing we could here to ensure that, you know, I didn't want to get through the NEPA process and have an evaluation that didn't reflect what the potential impact was. And also, as I said, in this competition, since we are evaluating these sites against each other, we needed to make sure that they had the proper impacts identified for each.
One other question, you may have said it and I missed it. Flip back a few screens to the aerials of each, or the graphics of each. How, go back to six, slide six, I guess, which is Landover. So how far is it to the nearest metro?
Landover, that's about two miles. That's about two miles. It's not a walkable site. And so, actually, this is the NCPC guidance, right? One to one and a half. And that, we actually were able to verify, that that was pretty accurate. The challenge is, you know, at these end-of-line metro stations, you have such reliance on Metro Rail, right? That is a radio system that brings people downtown, and the FBI employees are tremendous users of Metro now, where they're located downtown. But where people will operate, or where they will live, and how they get to those work sites, changes significantly when the work site moves. And that's why we actually felt that by looking at proxies, looking at how people operate in other similar situations was the most informative. And we'd be happy to, well, actually, we have shared that analysis with the staff, but we would be happy to continue that discussion in the future to find a way to get it in something that is both encouraging of transit usage, but also providing the facilities that these agencies need to do their job.
Can you flip to Green Belt and Springfield, and what the distance is there?
Green Belt is...
Where is the metro?
Basically right there, right? It's walking distance, I don't know if this has a point there.
Where is it? I'm not finding it.
Give you the...
Oh, I see it, yeah.
About there, above the word seven.
Yep, yep.
Right. So this is essentially right there. But you know, it's at the end of the line, so where is that pool of people that are taking it? And so, that's the situation. Now, these numbers, where they seem high, and they're higher than the NCPC guidance, I mean, keep in mind that there are still 5,000 employees a day that are getting there that are not driving their car, right? So there's still a significant transit usage and car pooling, but it's that number that we've all become trained to recognize as something, when you have transit there, that we expect to do better. And the reality that we found is that this is pretty good. But with that in mind, we still would be happy to, as we go through, once we identify that site and have more information, is to work with the Planning Commission to identify an appropriate level of parking. But this decision had to be made, so that we could conduct the EIS analysis and to move forward with our RFP process. No, this is, it's walkable today. The, well, the tenants, there aren't a lot of tenants there, right? It's predominantly warehouse and a low-density development. It will be a much higher density of development in the future, and so pedestrian access will need to be improved, but it's, you know, a half a mile or so, it's a reasonable walk.
What's the walking route?
Pardon me?
What is the actual walking route from the site to the metro?
Today, it's not a pleasant one.
Well, I wasn't looking for an evaluation, just what is it, so?
Yeah, there would need to be a path through, I'm sorry, I don't have, I put the pointer here.
Yeah, can you, Mr. Wild, maybe you can...
A path would need to... I could use that one.
Ah. You can't be on mic when you're doing that.
And I don't think, I don't think it's all open right now. I think there's fence around there too, as well now.
They'd have to build it.
Yeah. You'd have to build something.
Right. Improvements are definitely needed. But, you know, 11,000 jobs here and the proximity to the station would warrant those improvements, without a doubt. So we fully expect that this would be... So we fully expect that this would be a reasonable, an easy walk, right? If you can get rid of that additional mode of your commute where you take a commuter bus to Metro Rail to then a shuttle, the more segments you have, the less desirable it is. Obviously, if you can walk it, that's the preferred option. And so if this site is selected, we would work very hard to ensure that there is a good walkable from the station.
One more question, then I think I'll be finished. In the RFPs that you sent out in calculating it, have, did you, does it include anticipated parking infrastructure as well? And does it also include investment in parking incentives to employees? Is that also an alternative that's factored into the calculation?
Yes, they, what the RFP does is sets this number and says this is the number of spaces that we would expect you to provide. I think the transportation management planning and incentives are part of what will come before you from FBI and GSA that will include all of those things.
But have you, along the way, have you looked at both of those in terms of, I know it's a little speculative at this point.
Of improved incentives?
Yeah.
You know, again, where we relied on these proxies and recognizing that those types of measures are in place. And until we get a couple of years from now, we've got more specifics on the site, what the transit benefit is, what transit services are there, we'll be in a much better place. But I believe that those types of criteria are folded into those proxies. It's very difficult to say that, and this is the challenge of estimated parking is, would one program or one aspect of that program change the employee behavior and operations? So, again, we felt that proxies was the best representation and what we felt was the responsible number to include going forward at this stage, recognizing we hope to do better in the future.
Just, thank you. Just in terms of projecting the future demand, is the selection of a site, is any of the criteria associated with whether it might have an improved access through transit over another site? Or are they all deemed equal at this stage?
That is, if I understand the question right, is do sites get additional consideration because of their transit accessibility? I think that I would answer that, that the sites that have better transit accessibility will require less parking and will probably require less off-site location. So there's a financial incentive there for it. And that's, so that is how it's factored in. But no, there is not a specific credit for being closer to transit.
Several things. First of all, Tom, it's good to see you back in this environment. It's also good to see that your brilliance and sensitivities are well being used at your new agency. At least I hope so anyhow. I got a couple, just a few questions. First of all, some of this may be late in the story, but has there been any survey of the employees to see where the center of mass in terms of where they live now and which one of these would better accommodate that? And I guess that's been done. Is there an answer?
Yeah, of course, FBI knows and I think they've shared and seen over their shoulder the, sort of the heat map, where, what zip codes do employees live in?
Yep.
And we're using, looking at that information to sort of evaluate these, but what we recognize is that over time, employee location shift, right? So the employees have located around the region to use transit to come downtown to the site. So we would expect some shifting of employees over time. And with the lead time that we have here, right, it'll be five years or so from this point to when we actually open the doors. But there will be some of that shifting taking place. And not to keep saying, giving the same answer all the time, but what we looked at was how those proxies reflect for locations where people are working and they've made their choices for where do I live and how am I going to get to work? Do I want my kids to go to this school or...
So let me ask the question more narrowly.
Okay.
The specific one was, which one best fits the present employment base?
All three sites are...
About the same? Okay.
And provide...
Well, that's, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a good answer. Now, the other question I have is this. We know that, and probably the only one we can get at this time, I understand, but maybe there was a magnitude of, over, I don't know, one place or the other. Okay, the other question is this. These changes in these locations have a great impact on communities. And I would like to believe a positive one, once we get past the parking and people's neighborhoods, et cetera. And is there any factoring in of where the federal government, by selecting a place, can have the greatest long-term economic value impact to a neighborhood that it moves into?
So...
I'm not trying to get a PhD effort out of this and I'm sure we're not going to go there, but it seems to me, and I've had this discussion kind of earlier with our comprehensive plan, this seems to be something that we ought to be thinking about as a long-range thing. But is there any thought being given or do you know that?
We recognize that there will be some negative and we'd like to think many positive impacts by locating FBI at any one of these sites. But the competition that we have prepared is for the best value for the government. So we have not factored in...
Well, the best value for the governments is the best value for people and the communities that pay the taxes to move these things. So I would think that would be a factor, but I guess I'm sounding maybe, I don't know. I'll leave it alone, I got your answer, I understand. That wasn't probably part of the consideration. It was more a development situation where you look for developers willing, not developers who saw a value to a community. Okay, because I just got, I mean, I know it's late and we got Homeland Security coming to Anacostia, which we hope, east of the river, which we hope will have positive, though we got some, will be some growing pains. I know there was no space for you, but they'd only have to change two subway stops from where they are now, Green Line here, to Anacostia Green Line to get to, saying, to get to east of the river. But thank you very much, Tom, good seeing you.
If I could ask a couple, so there's some things about this that are kind of puzzling to me. But first of all, I want to talk about the uniqueness of being at the terminus. I mean, there are, the two out of the three that are closest to metros are actually at the terminal point of the metro lines. What is it that's unique about that? Because you refer to that a couple of times. It's not a factor that I've ever heard mentioned here before in, you know, somehow tempering what the requirement would be. So explain to me what that means. Why is it different?
Why, why is it different?
Why is it different to be at the end of a metro line as opposed to being somewhere along the middle of it?
Right, well, sorry, so it's a radial system that brings employees down, right? That's how Metro Rail was originally designed and constructed and it does a great job of that. But when you're at the end of the line, the origins really, you have nowhere out beyond that that you are attracting employees from and riding that in. So the out is kind of from the core out, right? It's that reverse commute is something that Lamotta is always looking for to use that capacity. But if you look at the way employees choose their homes and their transportation options to that work site, when you're at the end of the line station, it makes it much more difficult to use what people would expect would be a valuable resource, a valuable way to get to the office. And it's just different. And there is a paragraph in the transportation element of the comprehensive plan that talks about that and says how they need special consideration.
So has that special consideration been, I don't know, I'm hearing some sort of feedback. Has that special consideration been factored into the location of other federal facilities and NCPC planning efforts in the past? I mean, it says that it's, we should, but has it actually happened?
I can't speak to those today, I'm sorry.
Maybe, Mr. Wild?
I would have to go back and look through the master plans, but my understanding is we pretty much stick to our ratios.
Right.
No matter where on the line a federal facility is located.
Right, yeah, I mean, my, I mean, my experience in the time I've been here, which hasn't been that long compared to some people I know. But it's, you know, we're always trying to get to those levels, even if we're talking about, you know, modifications or future master plans, or master plans for future development of government sites where we're actually trying to push things closer to that. And that means eliminating parking, which is much more stressful than building a new facility and trying to accommodate these numbers. So it's a little puzzling to me that we would, that at any point we would see a reason not to stick with the standard ratios that are in the, in NCPC's plans. You also mentioned mission considerations. You want to elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure, so the work of the FBI and what they need to do. Every agency is somewhat unique, isn't unique, right? One of the concerns here is that FBI doesn't have a lot of telecommuting and alternate work schedules that many other government agencies can make use of, right? To do their work, they need to be onsite. And so we looked at what their requirements were to do their, to do their work. And so it takes some of the tools out of that transportation management planning and sort of puts you towards a slightly higher requirement. And that's what I meant by that in general. The representatives from the Bureau are here, if you would like them to talk about their mission and the importance of having this consolidated framework.
Right, well, I mean, there are certainly examples of other agencies, and you mentioned one of them, NIH, where I'm sure that there aren't too many doctors that are doing telework, right? And researchers who use laboratories and so on. So I'm not sure how far that flies, I mean, it's...
Well, what I would say is that we looked at NIH and we looked at what, how people actually get to work. So in spite of the onsite parking limits that have been tied to that site, people are still showing up for work parking illegally, parking in the neighborhoods, parking offsite, that we needed to show how we could accommodate that demand. So actually, that was a proxy that we used. Sites like Greenbelt, if the parking is not provided, there isn't really that, there's not a private garage across the street. There's not a lot of other businesses there. So we needed to make sure that in our proposal, in our process, that we are reflecting what we think that demanded of vehicles that will be driving there or parking across the street, if that is part of the solution, and what those transportation system impacts are going to be.
So on a certain level, it's understandable that you need to anticipate impacts that might be associated with the maximum number of vehicles that would attempt to get there. But on the other hand, it sounds like you're essentially, you know, you've looked at what NCPC provides in the way of guidance for this and you've determined that you know better. And I don't know that we would agree with that ultimately. So I think that, you know, you're kind of setting yourself up for substantial battles further down the line. Is there any way for this to be couched in the fact that you may actually, I mean, because there may be impacts associated with the lower parking availability that you actually need to take into consideration if you're evaluating this in the EIS circumstance? I mean, if you wind up having, you know, 4,000 spaces instead of 6,000 spaces in one of the locations or, you know, whatever the numbers happen to be, and there is that potential for other parking impacts, I would think that would something, be something that you actually have to anticipate. So you're, I mean, you're, you're...
So the draft EIS includes the analysis of that NCPC guidance. So that analysis is done.
So that analysis includes the potential for over, or spillover parking into neighborhoods?
We'll have to look at and see if that is covered in the document, but we did the analysis for the draft EIS at this lower level.
Yeah.
The final EIS will include this additional analysis.
So this is, this is an alternative, if you will, I mean, maybe not formally an alternative, but it's part of the full range of analysis and what was done in the draft is still going to be in the final?
Correct. Like NEPA says, evaluate your expected or anticipated impacts on the environment before you make a decision. So here we have one set of analysis that has been released based on the NCPC guidance.
Right.
And we are conducting an additional analysis based on what we think is a more accurate estimate of how people will get to the site. And we will have that data.
But that assumes that you're just going to let it happen that way? I mean, there are lots of ways to manage traffic demand and the presumption is that if you're held to that, the higher parking ratios, the one to three ratio, that you're going to make the necessary operational policies and changes and so on to actually conform to that. I mean...
As I said, we will submit the master plan to the commission and we'll have that discussion when we have a site and specific information. But I'll go back to saying that the way people function and operate is not necessarily limited to the number of spaces and the...
So maybe you should, in your research into NIH, maybe you need to go back and listen again to the hearing that we had about that where we questioned those kinds of assumptions last time. I mean, this, you know, I'm trying to avoid another one of those circumstances. And, you know, we have seen extraordinary examples of the efforts of certain agencies, including the GSA, to meet very, very demanding parking ratios. And, you know, the Homeland Security headquarters is the prime example of that. And what we're seeing here is, you know, you're kind of throwing your hands up because you think, well, people aren't going to follow it, the people aren't going to, you know, we can't change people's behavior. Well, I'm not buying that, particularly when we're talking about building a brand-new facility. So, I mean, I think, I don't know what needs to be put into your draft document to be able to address all these scenarios, but I fear we're getting off on the wrong foot, so. I guess that's about all I have to say.
Yes, sir.
Could you go back to the Greenbelt site? So, I mean, I noticed here, I'm pretty familiar with this site. So I mean, pretty much the entire outline that you have, not in the red, but the outline of where buildings, everything will be right now are surface parking lots for Metro.
That's correct.
Which supports that, I mean, you've got the highway off-ramps that are specifically meant to put cars into that lot and you've also got the mark line just to the left of the Greenbelt Metro there. Will this EIS take into account all of that Metro parking you're getting rid of? That, I mean, I don't see anywhere on this plan where there will be additional parking garages for Metro that would be in the same numbers.
That parking will be replaced in a parking garage that's just immediately south of the current platform.
And that would have, anticipate to be the same amount of parking and not putting any more parking?
Parking would be replaced.
That was my concern with that. So is that consideration part of the EIS or would that be a separate thing for when Metro eventually gets to that?
That is part of the project. So for this facility to be constructed, that parking would be replaced in that, in that structure.
Okay.
Sean?
So I think I have two questions. Well, is there a thinking about sort of design excellence already as well in terms of, in not just being a suburban campus? And I know too that going back to NIH, that around natural services and, you know, water retention and all those sort of, those natural amenities, are those being sort of thought of and considered in the EIS this as well?
Yet, the goals for the project are identified there, but we are not asking offers to do a design at this stage. We're asking them for their concept, their massing, how they would do it to support their cost proposals. But we will go through that design process together once we've identified an offer and the site and with the input from bodies like that.
I'll just say once again that the concern is, a suburban mall, just a glass building that's, you know, full lot all the way up is great, but once again, we're retrofitting these, we're retrofitting all these communities to do that. And you've seen some great historic urban campuses that allow, you know, childcare and other facilities as well. And so I just, I hope once again too, that we don't see a big glass box surrounded by parking.
Understand and appreciate that and we look forward to working with you.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Newsy.
Hi, forgive me, I'm relatively new to this, so I don't know if this has already been asked and answered, but these are all secure parking facilities. I know that in Chicago, when the FBI moved its facilities from the downtown headquarters to out of the, out of the metropolitan area, that it continues to contract with GSA for parking downtown, just to close it with the courthouse. What is the plan for this move, like with regard to secure facilities downtown and their use and whether or not they'll be maintained?
Yeah, so the headquarters operation, if I understand right, I'll take a shot at this. It is the folks here across the street at the Hoover Building and 13 different lease locations. So we would vacate those leases throughout NCR and they would, those 11,000 employees would come to this facility. Sure.
Chairman, Mr. Dixon?
I just want to add to maybe an earlier comment that it seems to me that, and I'm sure that the jurisdictions are weighing in heavily in terms of lobbying and supporting their particular campus over others. So maybe that's where this comes out, which makes sense. But it just seems to me, the neighborhoods that can best absorb this... But it just seems to me, the neighborhoods that can best absorb this, because in one case, we speak of a static situation where people do not want to likely not give up, give up their parking, they want to, you know, have ease access without using Metro maybe. And on the other case, we say, oh, this will change over time, things will, now we got dynamics. And I think that dynamic means that there's got to be, is there space for a new housing? So when people do decide to move, are we going to be, is this area that would accommodate a new community kind of presence where these folks can move in time? And I think that's probably maybe jurisdictional pressure rather than what you have before you, but it seems to me that's very, it's very important to have that looked at.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments to Mr. Dowd or Mr. Wild?
Hearing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, sir.
Look forward to seeing you again.
My pleasure.
Item 6B is an information presentation on the DC Clean Rivers Project. Mr. Bernard is with us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. The District of Columbia Water and Sewer Authority, also known as DC Water, is here today to provide an information presentation on the DC Clean Rivers Project. I want to provide a brief introduction before I turn it over to Mr. George Hawkins, the CEO and General Manager of DC Water. DC Water is the agency that provides drinking water and wastewater treatment services to the District of Columbia, as well as wastewater treatment services to a number of surrounding counties. DC Water is involved in many operations throughout the city, ranging from ongoing repair and maintenance of pipes for its water system, to running the, the largest wastewater treatment plant in the world at Blue Plains. This presentation will focus, however, on the DC Clean Rivers Project, which is a federally mandated effort to reduce discharge from combined sewer overflows into district waterways. Like many older cities in the Northeast, early parts of the district sewer system were designed and constructed in the early 1900s when combining sanitary sewage and stormwater into a single pipe was standard practice. During dry weather conditions, this works fine, as all sanitary sewage is conveyed to the Blue Plains Advanced Wastewater Treatment Plant, where it is treated before being discharged into Potomac River. During heavy rains or wet weather, the capacity of the combined sewer system may be exceeded, resulting in the excess mixture of stormwater and sanitary sewage being discharged directly into nearby water bodies such as the Anacostia River, the Potomac River, and Rock Creek. These events are called combined sewer overflows and can significantly degrade water quality in the district's waterways. In response to the deficiencies of the combined sewer system and to comply with the Clean Water Act and the conditions of the permit under National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, DC Water began to develop the Long Term Control Plan in 1998. The purpose of this plan was to reduce, to reduce the number of CSO events and to improve water quality in the region. This plan was memorialized by a consent decree in 2005, and then in 2010, the Long Term Control Plan was renamed the DC Clean Rivers Project. In April of 2012, Mr. Hawkins appeared here before the commission to inform the commission of potential changes to the consent decree. The proposed modifications included using green infrastructure such as permeable pavement and bio-retention areas, instead of gray infrastructure like storage tunnels and larger pipes to control excess rainfall in parts of Northwest DC. Since then, these modifications have been approved and incorporated into a modified consent decree, which was entered into federal court on January 14th of this year. These modifications are the subject of the presentation we will hear in a moment. So this graphic shows the DC Clean Rivers Project based on the original 2005 consent decree. It features three tunnel systems, the first of which, shown here in purple, the, for the Anacostia River Tunnel System. Since 2010, the commission has actually reviewed seven projects related to the tunnel system, five of which were approved as delegated actions. This part of the plan is currently underway and will not change as a result of modifications to the consent decree. As part of the original plan, it included gray infrastructure tunnel systems in both Potomac and Rock Creek areas. But with the modifications to the consent decree, plans for tunnels in these areas have changed. Going forward, NCPC can expect to review projects in both of these areas. So now I'll turn it over to Mr. George Hawkins to continue the presentation and provide a little bit more information about the green infrastructure modifications to the DC Clean Rivers Project.
Thank you. Before, Mr. Hawkins, let me just note for the record that this is only an information presentation, but my firm is involved at this project, so we'll eventually have a conflict of interest, but this is just an information presentation. And all I'm going to do is welcome Mr. Hawkins to the microphone. The renowned Mr. Hawkins.
Gosh, I've been called worse.
The infamous Mr. Hawkins.
Just today. A good afternoon, it's a delight to be back. I can hardly believe it was 2012 when I presented here the last time. It reminds me that sometimes success comes from a little bit of stubbornness and perseverance, as much as the good ideas, but we've been delighted about the progress we've made since 2012, and we're delighted by feedback, questions, and submissions that this, the NCPC made in the process itself. So we've very much been a partner to where we are today, and I'm very pleased to give you an update as to where we are. One of the most important features, it is something we call the DC Clean Rivers Project. We make every effort in all of our projects at DC Water to make sure the names actually give an indication to the people we serve and who are paying for them of what we're doing the project's for, not just a, a, a name that is accurate under the law. It is a long-term control plan, but of course, it is being done to clean the rivers of the city. So that is the name. And wanted to emphasize that we've achieved significant reductions already. So we are already seeing improved performance in all three of the water bodies of the city, based on what's been accomplished. And this is part of the decree.
George, can't use that.
Oh, I can't use this.
Advance as well to people in New York.
Oh, gosh, okay. Well, then I'll just point it out, what you'll see in, for each of the rivers and then in composite in the fourth, in the green box, is the current, the amount that was overflowed in an average hydrologic year, for any analytical format, you have to pick a set of years to establish a baseline for how much precipitation. And there's a whole manner in which that was selected, with a very high precipitation year, medium, and low to come up with a composite year. And in that, in a given year, for each of the rivers, you see what we started with in blue. What we've achieved so far, reductions you see in red, so we've already been able to reduce more than a billion gallons of overflow within the system for the projects we've undertaken to date. And then what you see in green, which is at the far right, is what we will accomplish by the conclusion of the project. It is one of the most ambitious combined sewer projects in the United States as far as the efficiency of the program. It's a slightly different percentage for each river, for example, than the Anacostia River, where achieving a 98% reduction. Overall, it's 96% reduction. The only city I'm aware of that has a higher reduction target is Akron, although I have nothing like the scale of what we're seeing here in the city. So this is a tremendous accomplishment, should be, we have every intention of achieving this in the project itself. You've heard all about this, so I can go through this slide fairly quickly. I do want to emphasize the dates that you've seen, that the project as originally described in the Long Term Control Plan Consent Decree is on the left, the new one is on the right. The route of the purple line, which is the Anacostia tunnels, has changed since the original route, so that doesn't show from right to left. It's changed only in ways that have made it actually accomplish a better outcome for the Anacostia and actually a better engineering outcome. We've been able to redesign it. The other change, which we'll not discuss here, but is very significant because it's gone going now, is on the purple side on the right on the Anacostia. If you take it all the way to the top, you'll see a little jog that goes straight up and down, which is by the McMillan Reservoir. See if you see that in the middle? We're actually building that now, out of order. The way it would have been under the original consent decree was to build that at the end. So as we, as our machines finally made it all the way into the center of the city, you'd build that little piece, which is on First Street, in the very end of the project. We will accomplish that as the fastest design-build project we've ever built at this scale, about $50 million spent, but where that will be completed by this spring. And what it will be is actually a significant reservoir for stormwater, essentially an underground sister. So in the middle of a storm in that neighborhood, that's Bloomingdale and LeDroit Park, the large, the piece of tunnel will act to contain a mixture of stormwater and sewage in that. And then after the storm goes by and the flow in the combined pipe drops, we'll pump it back out into the existing sewers. And that was done to try to provide flood relief for that particular neighbor, neighborhoods much faster than we would have gotten to them under the original plan. So there have been changes to the right side, but only changes to accelerate performance and some design as to where the pipe will exist. There have been very significant changes to the left side on the Potomac and the Rock Creek. The Rock Creek, you can see on the left, there is a tunnel in little purple, it's, it's a smallish tunnel on the, in the mid-upper-left of the district, that is entirely eliminated. So our plan is to capture all of the stormwater that would have gone into that tunnel by green infrastructure in the area you see outlined in green. That entire area is where we would be building green infrastructure to hold rainwater on the surface. And if it's held on the surface, you don't, it does not going into the pipe and not causing the overflow, in the same way a tunnel underground would do, the same job. So it's accomplishing the same goal, but using a different approach. On the Potomac, it's a slightly more complicated question. We still have a tunnel to build, and in fact, is longer than the original tunnel that was planned. Now, the tunnel on the left side, it's the original plan, is quite a large tunnel in diameter. Commissioner May may remember this as well as I do. I think the original plan for that tunnel was 34 feet in interior diameter, all along the waterfront. You see it ends, and the reason it ends on the left side is that there was an underground pump station we were going to have to build, that not unlike what I just described for First Street, once the storm had gone by, we were going to pump what was in that 34-foot diameter tunnel back up to the existing sewers and use them to cut across the Blue Plains. We were always worried about that underground pump station, it's very difficult to build a pump station underground of that scale on an engineering basis. The, the modified design, which has a longer tunnel, although not as, well, it's not as long north, so we do not have to build as far up the Potomac waterfront in Georgetown, and that portion that goes all the way down and links down to the existing Anacostia tunnel is much narrower, but it's all by gravity. So we eliminate the pump station entirely. So we think that the option on the right side not only affords us the chance to do green infrastructure, there are a number of engineering upgrades that we think will mean it will operate better and with lower maintenance costs over time and less opportunity for engineering and technical problems with a complicated underground pump station. We don't need to say much about this. I was delighted to hear in your conversation about the, the plans that you've just reviewed and have been discussing, that so many of the issues that we care about are obviously before you already and are at the front of your mind, that you're asking about other significant developments. But we're very keen on achieving some of those benefits with green infrastructure. We certainly are very good at building tunnels. We're doing, we just finished the first phase of our tunneling project on the Anacostia side, successfully and on budget. The second phase is ongoing, down from RFK to National Ballpark, essentially Poplar Point. The third phase will go into the center of the city. So we know how to build tunnels and we're reasonably good at it. They're out of sight, out of mind, and provide no other benefits except capturing that overflow during the storm event. I don't mean to minimize, by the way, that, that benefit. That's a very significant water quality benefit without a doubt. But all the rest of the time, that tunnel is empty and doing nothing. There is no benefits at all. Green infrastructure that we would, we would build that would have the same outcome, which is keeping stormwater out of a pipe that would cause an overflow. So the outcome to the river is the same, less overflows, but has all sorts of other benefits that we can achieve for the city. And we've highlighted many of them, and I know this, this body is very aware of those. But we love building on the surface. Those surface installations of green infrastructure are in use at every rainfall, containing rainfall, directing that rainfall to greenery that can benefit the neighborhood and the streets and the areas where it is put in place for heat island effects, for ozone, all sorts of, right on the street and the quality of life. The environmental benefit is very clear on water quality and air quality, as well as the overflows to the rivers. But it's also very significant on green jobs. We have an, a memorandum of understanding we've signed with the city. I've met the people who work underground on these tunnels, they're excellent workers, they do very good work, but they tend to go from site to site. So many of the folks who are working on our tunnels were working in New York or somewhere else before, the Sandhogs. So given the scale of the construction, not as many of those jobs go to local jobs because there's such a specialized nature of working in this 1,500-ton behemoth of a machine that's 10 stories underground and longer than a football field. Green infrastructure jobs, which is the modification of the flow of, of water usually along public spaces on streets, is work that we absolutely can train our citizens to do, and not only the work of installing it, but maintaining it over time. So we're very encouraged by what we're going to be able to do for local hiring and this process, which is one of the elements that has encouraged us to, and I know comments that came from this commission, encouraged many to support this modification to the consent decree. I won't spend a lot of time on this because you've heard about it. I do want to mention that the modification along the Potomac actually has a, a series of elements, part of which is green infrastructure. And you can see, this is right north of Potomac in Georgetown, that area outlined in green is the area in which we would have to capture stormwater in green infrastructure at the surface, rather than in a tunnel. There are other parts where we were going to build a tunnel that we're actually going to separate the sewer and the stormwater, so we won't have sewage mixing with stormwater. And there's third, there is a tunnel that we will be building, and as I said, it will, by gravity, connect all the way across, and so we believe will perform better. That's not part of this presentation, but I'm happy to, to say that we now have an MOU in place. It was just approved this morning at our board meeting with the Kennedy Center. We're going to improve the Potomac Interceptor, which goes right through their site. They are planning an expansion of the Kennedy Center, which I'm sure you're well aware. We're going to do our work in conjunction with them. In fact, we are hiring them to do the work, so that our work will not impede any of their work. And in fact, the two will work in concert to the betterment of both of us. And that was a, a very good negotiation we have with them and working hand-in-hand with the Park Service, clearly. We do have a pretty detailed implementation schedule for the various elements on the Potomac and the Rock Creek. One of the very important elements that I wanted to emphasize upfront, that you see happening in 2019, to the border of 2020, is that we're doing substantial projects on both the Potomac and the Rock Creek, and evaluating whether they work before we commit to all the rest of the projects. One of the manner in which we were able to get regulatory agencies to approve this approach was the question of, will it in fact perform on a water quality basis as well as we believe it will? We've done tremendous analysis, looking lot by lot in the neighborhoods affected, where we believe we will find the parcels to do this work, and we will be able to contain enough water, and we have the best analytical tools out there to support that outcome. But we want to make sure that the practice of building those first projects that you see left of those lines that are going north vertical, in fact, work as a, practical matter as we plan them to work in concept. Because ultimately, DC Water is on the hook for delivering water quality to the Clean Rivers Project. And if it turned out they are not working, or we're not able to build them for some reason, we'll turn back on the tunnels, which is a little simpler on the Rock Creek because there was less challenge with building that tunnel. A much more difficult road ahead if we have to go back to a different design for the Potomac tunnel, because that's always been a tough tunnel to design in any event. But that is there. So we, we're ultimately going to prove that this works, not just in concept and by design, but in fact, by building a substantial pilot, but it's bigger than a pilot. We're going to do it in several neighborhoods, I'll show you in a moment, making sure that it works both mechanically, what the agencies we have to work together with are possible, the neighborhoods that we have to work together are possible, and then go forward. And I can tell you that while everybody is, I think, very favorably inclined towards the ultimate outcome, no neighborhood likes having their streets dug up while you're doing the work, particularly in areas as crowded as Georgetown. So we are doing every bit of outreach we can, but are not surprised that there are challenges, particularly in that kind of landscape. This is what I just mentioned. We evaluate GI by doing some projects in the field. We will make a determination, and everyone will see this, so this will not be hidden. It will be transparent of what we discover, what, how it performs, whether we're able to build what we hope to build. If GI is practicable, we go on and build all the rest to the tune of about 100 million, but that's, we're not going to a dollar figure. We'll spend as much money as it takes to build what we've said the performance must yield. So there's not a dollar, there's a dollar estimate, it is not a cap. We will spend what it takes to deliver the performance. If it is impracticable, we've got to go back and figure out how to redo the tunnels, because we have to achieve the ultimate water quality outcome under the consent decree. We have been doing very extensive stakeholder engagement and participation. We have been doing very extensive stakeholder engagement and participation. The whole idea here is to put out enough information about what we plan to do in advance to get as much feedback in advance, to incorporate it into the plan even before we build the pilots. So we've been to a tremendous number of public meetings, 2015. I'm joined, by the way, by Bethany Bezek. She's the Director of our Green Infrastructure Program, absolutely excellent member of the team, and she's doing a lot of these meetings herself, along with Carlton Ray, who many of you know who runs our entire Clean Rivers Project. She and others. This is way bigger than any one person, given the scale of public outreach, and which we have done and will continue to do, to try to get the various players to understand what we're seeking to do, we hope, support us. And if not, we'll figure out what the alternatives are, given fairly significant space limitation. Obviously, we have to build green infrastructure in a particular area where the storm water otherwise would have run off to the tunnel. So finding other areas where we could build GI in the city doesn't help us if it doesn't stop the storm water that otherwise would go to the tunnel. So those are very particular areas that we have to build the green infrastructure, and that's one of our clear limitations. I don't have to go through many of this, you've seen this so many times, for what are the options for green infrastructure. And I want to emphasize that not all these options will be looked at everywhere. For example, in many of the Georgetown locations where there's so little existing space within the curb-to-curb and even using some of the sidewalk, that the curb extension and the planter extension are unlikely to be options in most parts of Georgetown just because they won't fit. If we can fit them, we're open to using anything, but we're not saying that because you see them here, they must be jammed into a place where they don't make sense. If they can't be fit into a particular area because of site conditions, we will not seek to implement that. These are the areas where we're doing our first projects, and I can tell you, we've gone lot by lot in these, we have very particular analysis. It's what enabled EPA and the Department of Justice to support this modification and have it entered into court because we were able to demonstrate at a very detailed level why we believe green infrastructure could achieve the same performance goals on water quality. And this is the area where, and you can see the steps that we intend to follow in order to meet the deadlines, which are now in the modified consent decree. So we are still have milestones and deadlines that are part of the modification. And most of the work in these are within the DDOT right-of-way and not in federal land. We will be making submittals to this commission, we think, summer/fall of this year. So myself, Bethany, Carlton, maybe all of us, will be back with more detailed versions of this specifically as opposed to the general overview. Potomac River, this is the Georgetown side. Once again, most of this is probably within the DDOT right-of-way as opposed to federal land down closer to the river. This is the harder nut to crack of getting green infrastructure into part of the city, which is already very dense and not a lot of space. Anyone who drives through there knows how the jar is getting by, it's just barely fit. But these are similar areas, and again, we'll be coming summer/fall, a little later, summer to fall, probably, after those for the Rock Creek, but we'll be bringing both of these submittals back to the commission. So I'm delighted to be here with this much progress. We are deep into the work. We'll be coming back with more detail, so you'll see more as opposed to the general outcome, but we wanted to give you a sense, the Monet painting of where we are now before we come in with the specific photographs. And those will be coming, and it's a delight to be here. I'm perfectly happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Shaw.
Hi, Mr. Hawkins. How are you doing?
I'm well.
So we are hiring a new susta, I'm the Director of the Office of Planning. I would love to have you come and talk to our staff. We have a new sustainability planner, and we've done some reorganization on our award planners, and we're working on green infrastructure. And so just want to make sure we're all connected on this. So I'll follow up with you or your staff to have you come do a green bag or a brown bag or something like that with my staff for something. So just, I would appreciate you coming out and talking to my staff.
I'd be delighted. I think it's a great connection.
All the questions, Ms. Wright?
I have a question about Georgetown. Georgetown, I think, sort of gets treated like the spoiled kid from the first marriage, you know? And we don't really like to pay attention sometimes because we figure, oh, well, you know, they've got lots of dough and everything's just peachy over there. But it seems, it seems that there's a little bit of a kerfuffle in the works about 106 and whether or not there was due diligence and whether or not there was an obligation to do 106. So can you talk to us a little bit about this? Because I don't really understand the full implic, I mean, I understand the implications, but I'm not clear on why 106 wouldn't apply. I know it's, there was federal participation in the form of EPA, right? So from my days on the Advisory Council, it would seem to me that that would trigger a 106 review, if only in Georgetown specifically. And can you talk about that a little bit? Because the historic resources and the effects on the now, that that whole section of the tunnel is no longer the park services problem, but rather now the neighborhood's problem seems to be pretty significant to me.
We'll ultimately do whatever reviews are ultimately determined to do. Our intention in Georgetown was not to do the kinds of green infrastructure that was going to significantly change the surface. And so that's why we eliminated a lot of the bumpouts that would have changed very much the character of the street and do more under the street or under walks. So we had not considered that 106 would apply, but if it's determined that it does, we'll undertake whatever reviews are necessary. There's definitely been a kerfuffle in Georgetown. We're reaching out in every way that we can. And I actually have in my notebook a long briefing document on the issue, which I haven't read yet, because that has most recently come up, and we're trying to figure out what we think is the right answer, which is one answer. The other is, what's the answer that has to be done to accomplish our goals, which is, we hope those match up, but we certainly didn't avoid it because we thought anything other than, we're very used to following a lot of laws, rules, regulations.
Right, right. I imagine.
As regulated as you can imagine.
That's why I think it's a little bit of an oddball situation that you find yourself in.
Well, we'll undertake whatever reviews need to be done. This one was one we thought originally we did not have to undertake.
Right.
But we've certainly heard that others have a different opinion, and we're fully evaluating it. Our goal is to accomplish that, so we will.
So if you have to now, I mean, I don't, I don't think, can you retroactively do 106? Does anyone know that? That's smarter than me.
Well, let me just shed some light on this. The 106 responsibility would, to the extent it resides, would reside with EPA, who has to issue a national pollution elimination discharge permit. It would not apply to this commission or CFA who take advisory actions. I think the issue from our perspective, and I'm not sure I can say retroactive, but I think the issue from our perspective and my perspective is when would this process need to start? Because you don't want to, if it starts too late, you will be in a situation where the work is done and you can't necessarily change what is done based on the findings of the 106 consultation process. So I am looking into that issue, and when does it, if it has to start, when does it start? But I think for the time being, Mr. Hawkins recognizes correctly that they need to kind of work this out.
We wanted to have enough information that we, in fact, many of the steps, until we had that consent decree entered in the court, we, in fact, had no agreement that we would even be doing the project at all, which happened in January. So that has really triggered, now it is a consent decree entered with the court. This is now the modification schedule, plan that we have. So we're fully and squarely addressing all the issues that will have to happen, just like we would have if we hadn't had it entered. We were in a significant area of limbo before the consent decree was entered, where there was significant uncertainty as to whether that was going to happen, of how much to do along the process of what we would have to do once it was entered, if it, in fact, ended up not being entered in the court, which many times in this process I thought was going to be the outcome. And the second is, we wanted to know enough about what we plan to do so that the assessment of what consequence there is, is not in general and theoretical, but is specific of what is in fact the plan. And I think we're at that point. Whether 106 is the correct step or not, I personally don't have an opinion yet because I haven't evaluated the information. That doesn't mean it's yes or no, I just don't have a view on it yet. But we now have enough information about what we plan to do, to have real data to use as our foundation for what the right answer, we think the right answer is.
And so, well, that all makes sense. And so now you have, you have a real idea of the physical manifestation, the physical designs that will be the alternatives to what was supposed to be just one big tunnel under the waterfront park, right? And when did you get to that point where you had something to, where you had actual design, however preliminary? Is that recent?
We've known the areas where we would have to accomplish green infrastructure for some years because we know where the tunnel is, we know where the outfalls. There was change substantially in the last year and a half because we originally, there had been a series of proposals for what we were going to do. And I originally, maybe crazily, thought we could eliminate the entire Georgetown tunnel and do it all with green infrastructure, and it became clear that we were not able to do that. We had a second design, which we proposed maybe two years ago, that got significant comment in the comment period. The design we have now is actually the third design, and that came to the forefront last year. So, and that was this separation in some neighborhoods, green infrastructure in others, extending the tunnel all the way across. That was essentially a redesign in response to all the comments that we got.
Yeah.
And in that case, it's been about a year, so we really had a good idea of what the proposal is that everyone's been evaluating. For what streets and where we're going to actually do the pilot, we had a sense of, of course, the neighborhood, we'd done an analysis, are there enough square footage that we are even in the ballgame of being able to capture it?
Yeah.
Now, actually going into a site where it would be in this little neighborhood where we're going to do the project, that's been relatively recent.
Yeah. So you're ready. If the decision is made, that you have to go through it, you're equipped now. You wouldn't have been 18 months ago.
If we had been, if it was clear that we had to do it 18 months ago, we would have had to make the, I'm amazed at what our, like all of your teams, what our team is able to do if we have to. And I have to say, we couldn't have done it 18 months ago if that had been clear. It's just, I'm not sure we would have prior to knowing that it was worth investing rate payer money in all the effort. It is, what you're saying is certainly true as a practical reality. The consent decree is entered, we absolutely have a go-ahead from the Department of Justice and EPA to go forth with this, and it is worth investing rate payer money in the details because now we know that money will go to an end that we can achieve under the law. Now we have to see and make sure we can achieve it as a practical matter out on the city streets.
Thank you.
Just wondering, can you tell us where we are in the digging now?
Sure. The first tunnel boring machine, which is named Lady Bird, has completed its job. So it is actually finished, that is from Blue Plains up to essentially National Ballpark. Our pump station is right next to the ballpark, and that's where we pulled the machine out of the ground. That is finished, and that was finished on time and on budget, glad to say, the $300 million project being done that way. The second machine is Danny, Danny Helen Burrows. It started at RFK Stadium, and it's drilling south. And so it will meet up in the same place, and you'll have the tunnel connected. And what's very good about that first phase, once those two phases are in place and we have the tunnel all the way up to RFK, that piece of the tunnel will go into operation by 2018. So all that, there's the first huge performance on the Anacostia comes in much sooner than by the end. So by 2018, we have a delivery date for performance for that whole tunnel system. And in parallel, we're building a clarification facility above where it will all be pumped to the surface at Blue Plains. Probably the most complicated project we'll ever build, although we're building a lot of them at the moment, is the tunnel comes into Blue Plains, there's a huge pump station. Think of the millions of gallons of this combined sewage and storm water that hits our facility 10 stories underground. You have to be able to screen it enough so that the pumps can pump it all the way to the surface. And then at the surface, we have a treatment plant we're building right on top of that huge shaft to give treatment prior to it being pushed into Blue Plains. And that's all designed to come online in 2018. The third piece is the First Street Tunnel. That tunnel boring machine is named Lucy, after, this was not why she was selected, but her name was Lucy Diggs Slow. But she was actually, my recollection is, she was the first African-American woman to compete in the Olympic Games. She was the first superintendent of schools in the district. She ran one of the schools, just an amazing. But Lucy is the next machine. It has finished its work. So the First Street Tunnel is now finished, it goes down First Street and been pulled out of the ground, but we're building a pump station there from a, we church agreed, and we have an agreement of where this little pump station will be. And now we're doing all the addits that need to go and connect to that pump station, which is all the construction you see on North Catholic Avenue and First Street. That's all the connections that go down to the tunnel. Build the tunnel is the easy part. Connecting the surface sewers to the tunnel is where you've got a lot of the hardest work. And that, we will, our original commitment to then Mayor Gray was to be finished late spring/summer 2016, and we are still on that schedule today. We are just about to go procurement for the biggest part of the whole project, which is the tunnel that will go from RFK all the way into the center of the city. That's about a $450 million project, my recollection is. And we'll be going to procurement on that later this spring.
I appreciated seeing the newsletter in my last bill, although I don't appreciate the bill necessarily because they keep getting higher, which was Lucy Diggs Fast.
We do appreciate that these are enormously expensive projects and that our rate payers are putting this bill, and you all have seen that. Whether you're in the district or outside, we indirectly charge through WSSC and Fairfax for services we provide as well, so we're very aware it's expensive.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you kindly. We'll be back.
Yep. Moving right along, the last item on our agenda is Agenda Item 6C, which is an information presentation on memorials for the future design competition. This is a joint initiative between NCPC, the National Park Service, and the Van Allen Institute. And I know the Park Service and Mr. May have been involved for quite some time, and as Ms. Bush is gearing up, Mr. May, you want to introduce this as well?
Sure. So I'll have a few things to say about the first few slides. Oh, my goodness, I get to advance. Uh-oh. I've never been given this material. What am I pointing at? There we go. So my job is to talk a little bit about the National Park Service Centennial, which is this year, August of this year is the 100th anniversary of the establishment of the National Park Service. And the celebration's already begun. The goal of Centennial activities is, I'm sorry, Centennial festivities, activities, and projects is to connect with and to create the next generation of National Park Service visitors, supporters, and advocates. The first director of the National Park Service, Stephen Mather, connected with and created the first generation of National Park Service visitors, supporters, and advocates by collaborating with the railroads and hoteliers to demonstrate to Americans that this country is full of grandeur comparable to, if not better than, that of Europe. Then another generation of National Park Service visitors, supporters, and advocates were connected with and created during the 50th anniversary of the National Park Service and the efforts through the Mission 66 to build roads and facilities to welcome Americans now traveling on the nation's highways in earnest. We are now building on these successes and connecting with and creating the next generation of National Park Service visitors, supporters, and advocates. There we go. So part of this, a very big part of it, is the Find Your Park Campaign. It is a public awareness effort that began in 2015 that will help reintroduce the National Park Service to all Americans. The campaign was born out of our mission to redefine the word "park." It is intentionally broad, including other public lands, because the national park system is part of a broader continuum of public spaces and places. We seek to connect our communities to all of these places and to build support for a broader mission of conservation, education, and recreation. So before I move on to the next one, I would just throw it back to some of the commissioners to offer their thoughts on what their park is. I'll go first. So I have special connections to certain parks in Washington, certainly. We're very close to a number of those parks, just a few steps away down on Pennsylvania Avenue. But also to Lincoln Park, which is right in my neighborhood, where my kids spent a lot of time when they were growing up. And in fact, I was engaged in Rock Creek Park. So who else would like to speak? What is your part?
I'd be happy to. I talk about this a lot.
I talk about this a lot. And I find it's a good conversation starter to ask people what their favorite park is.
Bayview Park, Pensacola, Florida, hands down, best park in America. Second would be the 606 in Chicago.
Any other volunteers?
Sure, Anacostia Park.
There we go.
Rock Creek Park is something I travel often, it's just amazing, an asset jewel for the city.
I thought about making, going down the line, making everybody talk, but I won't force you to.
We could be here for a while.
Yeah, we could. Anybody in the audience want to? No. I'm sure everybody has park stories. Mr. Harwood I know has park stories, he's been in every one of them and examined every one of them. Okay, I will move on. So there are many facets to the Centennial Celebration. A number of national programs, I won't go into these in great detail, but Every Kid in a Park, which is an effort to get every fourth grade student and their families across the country a chance to visit a park or other public land or water during the 2015-16 school year. We actually, it's a multi-agency effort. The Federal Interagency Council on Outdoor Recreation, or FICOR, because we love having acronyms, includes the National Park Service, Forest Service, Department of Education, Corps of Engineers, Bureau of Land Management, Fish and Wildlife Service, Bureau of Reclamation, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration as well. So other national programs going digital, we're updating our website to make sure that MPS.gov is more consistent and accurate, and as well as has now been tagging data to, to be more mobile responsive, because we know that people are visiting parks and don't necessarily have to rely on the brochure or map they get at the front, at the visitor center. They'll be just reaching into their pockets, and we want them to have the right information at their hands. And we view this work as key, really key to connecting with younger audiences. The Urban Agenda is another primary focus. That's, by the way, a photo of the Fort Dupont Summer Theater, which is where we do concerts in the summer in Fort Dupont Park, I'm sure many commissioners are familiar with. The goal of the Urban Agenda is to demonstrate that coherent system of parks, programs, and partnerships have an impact on the urban environment, to economic vitality, to historic preservation, to natural and cultural resources, to outdoor recreation, public health, to education, to urban design, and to sustainability. The program is developing now in 11 model cities, Boston, New York City, Philadelphia, Richmond, Virginia, Washington DC, Jacksonville, St. Louis, Detroit, Chicago, Tucson, and Richmond, California. We have urban fellows who will act as activators in the urban agenda, of the urban agenda in these cities, and we believe they will demonstrate how the National Park Service can play a vital role in urban communities. And I expect you will hear more about the Urban Agenda in Washington in the near future. So this is just a couple of interesting graphics. On the left is the National Capital Regional Parks, and you see there the blow-up of the District of Columbia. You can see how much land in the district is actually national parkland. But then the rest, you can also see the extent of things, where we go all the way out to Cumberland, Maryland, with the CNO Canal, and then on New Morris Battlefield Parks and Prince William Forest Park, the large green park at the lower end, and Catoctin Mountain Park at the north end. So the Centennial effort is, involves many outside groups. This is a list, I won't go through them all, we can all read them. But at the very bottom, we have NCPC, and that's what we're here to talk about today, is how NCPC is working with us to help celebrate the Centennial. So I will turn it back over to Ms. Bush.
Great. I'd like to thank Commissioner May for the introduction, as well as other NPS staff involved with the initiative, who are here with us today. We're thrilled to be working with both the Park Service and the Van Allen Institute on this, oh, let me change this slide, on this design challenge as part of our agency's ongoing memorial work. The Memorials for the Future Design Challenge is an ideas challenge that will invite interdisciplinary teams to propose new models for how our society commemorates the past. I'll share a little bit about the Van Allen Institute. They're located in New York City, and they specialize in developing design competitions and public programs in collaboration with communities, students, and professionals on a broad range of local and global initiatives. In fact, they previously completed a design, a student design competition in partnership with the National Park Service in 2012 that was entitled Parks for the People. And concerning this design challenge, they certainly share a strong interest in exploring the intersections of placemaking, public engagement, and artistic forms of remembrance in our nation's capital. And as you all know, one of NCPC's core functions relates to the establishment of national memorials in Washington, so we're always interested in continuing to learn about current trends of memorialization. And we hope that this challenge will provide insight as to how we can accommodate commemoration in the 21st century. In addition to our agency's work related to the planning and design review of individual memorial projects, NCPC has worked jointly with many of our federal partners on several initiatives related to memorials that provide a comprehensive picture of Washington's commemorative landscape today. These include publications such as the ones you see on the screen. This includes the Legacy Plan, the Memorials and Museums Master Plan, the Monumental Core Framework Plan, and most recently, our 2012 Memorials Trends and Practice Report. And these publications not only capture the existing conditions of memorials today, but they also lay out a framework moving forward with the future development of commemorative works. For the Memorials for the Future Challenge, we'll ask participants to imagine what the futures, the future of memorials could look like in Washington. And to be clear, we're not intending to build a future memorial as part of this challenge, but rather the goals for the challenge are up on the screen, and they include generating, we hope that we can generate a wealth of ideas and strategies to advance a framework for the planning and design of commemorative works in the 21st century. And we also see this challenge as an opportunity to showcase how alternative forms, such as temporary forms of commemoration, can provide a powerful and memorable experience beyond Washington's traditional approach to permanent memorials. In order to attain these outcomes, we'll ask participants to consider the current context of our commemorative landscape, and what some of the challenges are for the future of commemoration in Washington. And so over the next few slides, I'll highlight some of these challenges under three broad topics. The first looks at placemaking principles related to location, scale, and use. The second looks at alternative forms of commemoration. And the third topic deals with ideas of memory, identity, and national narrative, and how those relate to memorial works. First looking at location, the siting and location of many memorials is an integral piece of its overall design and development. And we frequently see memorial sponsors having a desire for their proposed projects to be located on or near the National Mall, which is, you know, a positive testament to the significance of the Mall in the eyes of Americans. But it also poses a challenge, because, you know, there just isn't space to support a constant, continual level of support. So the 200 images we see on the screen here, the one on the left illustrates the existing conditions of where memorials are located, and that concentration in that Monumental Core area is pretty evident. And this is in contrast to a map from the Memorials and Museums Master Plan, where they, we've mapped out potential memorial sites, which are the blue, purply dots, you know, which encourages moving forward the development of memorials kind of throughout our nation's capital. Because most memorials in Washington are located on national parkland, memorial-making can be an important component in a community setting. And in Washington, federal parks provide amenities that many local parks in other cities would provide. Memorials here must then be integrated with other uses. However, the goals for memorials don't always match community goals for public plazas or open space. Placemaking in memorial settings, whether it's in our neighborhoods, downtown, or near the National Mall, is really about getting comfortable with people using the space in ways outside of the direct interaction with like the memorial content itself. Another challenge concerning placemaking is a memorial size or scale. They have in recent years gotten larger in size with more complex programs, which poses a challenge for an urban park system and plays a greater role in the potential long-term implications and uses of their park setting. The memorials that are pictured on the screen feature two prominent individuals in American history, which certainly makes the case for memorial size and program. But at the same time, the design of these memorial, memorials also communicates this idea that in order to commemorate some of America's greatest figures, it really requires this size. When really, you know, this is one method for commemoration, and there may be alternative methods to commemorate figures that are equally powerful that could happen at a range of scales. And it also goes without saying that, you know, the increased scale and size of these new memorials can also increase the cost, which can in turn limit commemoration opportunities to groups or individuals who have the significant resources to commit to this endeavor. Current memorial trends raise a number of questions about the future of Washington's memorial landscape, and the ability to provide space and resources for future commemorative works. We will task the Design Challenge participants to consider alternative forms of commemoration, such as those that are temporary, and display how they can provide powerful and memorable experiences beyond Washington's traditional approach to permanent memorials. Temporary commemoration is an opportunity not only to explore the new formal qualities of memorial design, but it may also be a means to realize a commemorative work in a shorter timeframe and at a lower cost. We can consider the Temporary Memorial for the Events of 9/11, entitled Tribute in Light, which was put in place within months after the tragic events of 9/11, thus transcending debates about whether and how to rebuild. And removing the weight of permanency allowed for a simplified design review, the freedom to experiment with a new medium, and it, you know, still provides a very powerful and pure symbol of remembrance with a nation who is really, really from this recent tragedy. And as we now know today, this temporary memorial has subsequently been on display in memoriam, you know, annually for the event. We've also experienced temporary national memorials in Washington that have successfully met both commemorative goals and placemaking goals for public use and engagement. A prime example being the display of the National Memorial AIDS Quilt on the National Mall during the March on Washington for Lesbian and Gay Rights. You know, it's just as powerful a memory as many of our permanent memorials provide. And just some facts about it, it covered a space larger than a football field, as we can see down there. It included 1,920 panels, and over half a million people visited it over that weekend in 1987. Incidentally, the AIDS Quilt returned to DC in 2012, and this time the panels were dispersed throughout Washington, and it also included an online system of display. And this, you know, certainly kind of changed our perception about access to commemorative works. And it's also a question for our Design Challenge participants to think how digital technology can change the ways that we can commemorate the 21st century. Another broad topic we'll pose to the Design Challenge participants is to consider will be issues related to memory, identity, and national narrative. One of the unique roles of Washington as a national capital is that it's really a place of collective memory, and Washington commemoration takes on a heightened significance as our memorials reflect relationships among nations, national remembrance, and some of the most important events and figures in our history. And they're really a central reason why millions of people come to visit Washington every The story that, the story that a commemorative work tells through both its subject matter and design is arguably the most complex piece of a memorial, as that storytelling component embodies ideas of identity, culture, and heritage, which all have very personal interpretations for each and every one of us. And a key question for both our current memorials, as well as future memorials, is how their subject matter will continue to be interpreted as time goes on and as new generations evaluate their significance in the larger context of our ongoing national history. And as we've seen in current events across the country, there's a national ongoing dialogue about what happens when memories and the historical representations of significant individuals or events are in conflict. This raises a very complex question of what to do when a memorial's subject has a legacy that is complicated and has many dimensions. And we'll encourage the Design Challenge participants to reimagine historical commemoration for the future, and consider how through design a commemorative work can address the challenge of speaking to diverse audiences, particularly future generations. Now to look at next steps for the design competition. We're currently developing the Design Competition Brief, and we plan to issue a 30-day call for proposals in mid-April, which will be open to the public. From the submissions that we receive, three finalists will be selected to move forward and further their conceptual designs. And the three finalists will showcase their final product in a public exhibition here in DC in late August and early September, in tandem with the Centennial Celebration events. That's all I have for today. We look forward to continuing to work with the National Park Service and the Van Allen Institute on this project, and we welcome your comments and remarks today on what we presented. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bush, very much. Any question? Remember, Ms. Bush, and the enthusiastic Mr. May.
Yeah. Sorry, I can't, I can never be as excited as George Hawkins, but I will be. The, but we are very excited about this project. I don't know if everybody understands the breadth of memorial proposals we have to deal with, but there are currently 10 projects underway right now that are either explicitly memorials or related to memorials, existing memorials, add-ons, things like that. So there are 10 that have been legislated, and they were working through the process. And every year, of course, there are new things. We heard today earlier about the Korean War Veterans Memorial Wall of Remembrance. And there are other proposals that are in the Congress right now. And so they, they do keep coming. And, you know, once the Congress, of course, authorizes a memorial, we, we take those on and try to get the, fulfill the mission of establishing those memorials. But the location memorials is an incredible challenge. Certainly it's easier with some memorials than it is with others, but it is a very challenging thing, and, you know, the bare fact is that there just isn't that much space where people really want the commemorations to occur. So I think part of what we want to try to accomplish is just to start getting people to think more broadly about commemoration and how that might be accomplished, and whether we could do it in more ephemeral ways, or really we could be more flexible about location. I mean, any number of things, I think, help interest people and inspire people to do something a little bit different, because I think we need it. It may not be a crisis right now, but it, you know, it will be before too long. So we're very excited about this, and appreciate all the good work of NCPC staff with our staff. Tammy Stedham, who's here, and who is our point person on the project as well, has been doing a lot of work to help move this along, so I appreciate everybody's efforts. Thank you.
And Mr. Shaw?
Hi. Well, I'm excited about this, but given the memory of World War I, just can we make sure on Slide 19 that we, we sort of stick to the joint agreement around, this joint statement around neighborhoods and design? And so I saw Slide number 19, you know, the African-American memorial's also a skate park now, but just really understanding if there's a neighborhood context, working with our office to make sure we're defining either neighborhood, urban design interest, or just something like that, or if we have sites that are selected, working with us to make sure that we have a clear context for the sort of neighborhood, if you do something within, within the neighborhood context.
Absolutely.
And can we apply as a, as a district?
Sure.
All right, then, there you go. You ready, Evan? Well, we're excited about this, so any way we can partner as well, please let me know.
Absolutely.
All the questions and comments? Hearing none, and thinking there's nothing else to come before the commission, we are adjourned, and the commission will rise.